I want to call to order the Amberly Village Council meeting of February 10, 2020. Please call the roll.
Richard Bardak.
Here.
Peg Conway.
Here.
Ed Hattenbach.
Here.
Alita Kaymine.
Here.
Tom Muthing.
Here.
Ray Warren.
Here.
Natalie Wolf.
Here.
Scott Larmour.
Here.
Kevin McDonough.
Here.
Chief Wallace.
Here.
Rick Kay.
Here.
And if everyone could please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. First item on the agenda this evening is our minutes from our last regularly scheduled council meeting. Those minutes were circulated in the package. Are there any changes to those minutes? Seeing nine minutes can be considered approved. We'll now move on to the finance report for December 2019.
So as a combination of talking about December 19, I'd also like to talk about the year, the year end. So just talk about it in that it's holistic. We closed out December, and so the Finance Committee met this past, or last week in regards to December financials as well as the year-end report. So earnings tax for the month of December totaled about $153,000, and that brought our earnings tax to total collections of $2.9 million. So I'll sort of start with that. So revenue for the, for the earnings tax, originally we had estimated an amount to collect of $2,750,000 for the year, and it turns out we ended up collecting that $2.9 million. So we actually collected 105% of the estimated earnings tax revenue for 2019. But as we all know, the earnings tax is the most significant portion of our revenue, and so the total revenue for the general fund for 2019 was $5.2 million. Now, our estimate for the general fund revenue that we established a little over a year ago when we made our estimate was $4.9 million. So once again, we did exceed the collection of revenues. So 2019 was a good year on that, on the revenue side. Some sources of revenue increased while others decreased. So the areas that increased would be the earnings tax increased, as did the local government fund, which is a supply that we receive from the, from the state, very little, but we, it did increase slightly. Interest was another sizable increase. We went from $95,000 collected in 2018 to $130,000 collected in 2019. So that just merely reflects the market. We're still investing the same, the same, the way that we are required to do so. Some of those revenue sources that went down in terms of collections for 2019 would be the property tax. So we actually decreased about 3% on property tax collections. There was also a decrease on the JEDs. That is a revenue source that this village identified a few years ago. It's our arrangement with Sycamore Township, but those, that collection of those revenues went down 4% in 2019. Franchise fees, a fee that the village receives through cable and other sources, that went down slightly as well. But overall, the general fund saw an increase of 7% in terms of, in terms of revenue. So that was our reason we ended up at a $5.2 million number on the revenue side. On the expenditure side, a similar story, except the expenses for December, which is always a large month in terms of expenses for us, of $621,000. We ended up the year with a $5.1 million expenses for 2019. And this includes the basic funding of services like fire protection, snow and ice, emergency medical services, brush collection, all those services that we rely on, that are funded through the, through the general fund. And that also includes funding for the police department, which comes from our general fund, in the amount of $1.8 million from our general fund. But the, the estimate a little over a year ago is that we would have expenses of $5.3 million. Turns out, we, we ended up spending less. It was a $5.1 million. So we were under budget, and so therefore, there was $213,000 that was not spent in 2019. Another piece of the, of the expenditure, this $5.1 expenditure that we had in 2019, is that there's a significant number of transfers that occur. So that means that we're transferring money out of the general fund and putting it into other pockets of, of our budget, so that we can do other things. For example, purchasing capital items, money for storm sewer, money for the street fund. So in order to enable us to do a greater street program. And so some of those, that totals about $380,000. So that comes right off of the top of our, of our collection. So that's built into the, that particular budget. I do want to point out that our expense in 2019 of $5.1 million was about $13 less than what was spent in 2018. I don't want to identify that as a trend, because that is a bit of an anomaly for us, because it doesn't normally happen like that. But it is worth noting, since it doesn't happen that, that often. But our largest expense for the, for the village is our police department. We're familiar with the police levy, which brings in $1.3 million. But that does not cover the entire expense of the police department. That has to be added to the $1.8 million that comes from our general fund. So a total of $3.1 million is what funds our, our police department. So the, the overall for, for the revenues and expenditures is that we had a great year. Expenditures were less, revenues ran a little bit higher, and so we ended up with a, being under budget in the amount of $107,000. And that is good news for us, because initially, when we prepared the budget a little over a year, a little year ago, we projected a, an op, budget operating shortfall of about $350,000. So we beat that, and we're able to end in the black by $107,000. So that sort of concludes my December report and year-end all rolled into that. Thank you.
Are there any questions to the man? If not, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, and I will turn it over to the chief for a public safety recommendation.
Okay. Thanks, Mayor and Council. Tonight, I'm actually going to recognize one of our officers, as well as a citizen of the community. I'm going to give you a little background and just read a little bit of what actually happened on the run itself. This occurred on January 22. On January 22, Officer Robbins was dispatched for a disabled vehicle at the intersection of, across eastbound Ronald Reagan Highway ramp in Ridge Road. It came in as a, as a possibly a subject sleeping behind the wheel. Upon approaching the vehicle, the officer advised that the vehicle was in gear, the doors were locked, and the patient was unresponsive, pale and blue lips. At which time, the officer broke out the rear window behind the driver, was able to enter the car, get the car back in gear in a safe position, and remove the subject from the vehicle. At which time, Lauren Goforth stopped to help the officer. They were able to get him out, lay him on the ground. At that point, they began working on him during CPR. Officer Robbins was able to go back to his vehicle and retrieve the Narcan. At that point, Lauren continued doing CPR, chest compressions on the subject. After giving the four milliliters of Narcan, subsequently, the patient was revived and began breathing again. With that, he was transported by Redding Squad 83 to Jewish Hospital Kenwood. You know, we, we, this is, you know, like any other Narcan, but this is a situation where we don't know if it's Narcan or what it is at the time. And between the actions of the officer and actions of Lauren, put us in a situation where we're able to save someone's life. Got multiple phone calls from the family, just indebted to Officer Robbins and Lauren Goforth for their actions. So I only felt it, it was, you know, the right thing to bring them to council and recognize them. Now, most of you know Officer Robbins. He's been here over probably 27 years, and he, he, to him, it's just on his job, and it is. And we've had this conversation, and he's not happy to be sitting in front of you, but he, he, he truly deserves to be recognized for his actions. Lauren, today with her, she has her son, Jay, and her mother, Jane Palmer. And Officer Robbins has his sister, Linda, and her husband, Ed. I want to thank them for, everybody for coming out and being part of this, and I'd like to present Lauren with her award, as well as Mark with his. So thanks a lot. Job well done.
you both for what you did and the services you do every day. So thanks so much. We'll now move on to the next item on the agenda. We have seven citizens to address council this evening, and as, as you are called up, please come to the podium, just state your name and your address, and then you have three minutes to speak your, whatever you would like to speak. And due to the number of people addressing, I ask that council members reserve any comments till the, the end of the seventh. First, Paula Brimheager.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you to the village council. I'm Paula Brimheager. I am the library director, the Eva Jane Romaine Coombe Library Director for our Public Library of Cincinnati and Hamilton County. Hope that doesn't count against my time, such a long title. I really appreciate the chance to come and talk with you. I actually live in Clifton, so my address at home is 6 Ross and Wood Circle, but I work out of the main library downtown. I wanted to come and just point out to everyone here, as we're going around the county, that the library has just completed a year-long facilities master plan. It is available on our website at cincinnati library dot org slash next generation library. There are some handouts here in the back that highlight specifically the zone of the county that we're in, in Amberly and the surrounding communities, but you can always go online and check out what's going on. Some high-level points about the plan. It does provide our library recommendations and a strategic direction for upgrading our facilities over the next 10 years. There are 40 branches and a main library in our countywide system. It's about a million square feet of public space. So over the next 10 years, you'll see a lot going on. We have a couple of different kinds of projects, that are large-scale design projects, maintenance projects, as well as some strategic investments that are not as costly, but have a large impact. Again, more detail in the plan. It's important that we point out, we are using the one mil levy that was passed countywide in May of 2018, generously supported by our taxpayers, at, at north of 60% of a yes vote. In this plan, that we spent a year doing a lot of community engagement, working on assessing each of our locations to get an idea about what we could do with the money, and making sure that taxpayers aware of what we are doing with the dollars, we wanted to make sure that we came out and now reported on that as we begin doing all of what we have to do. There are no consolidations or closures in the plan at this point. If you look at it, we retain all of our buildings or all of our branches. There may be some changes in location, and there may be some changes that are substantial, particularly in those design projects. The one that I would point out here that is probably of most interest is the Deer Park Dylanvale Shopping Mall branch. Many of you may know that one. When I talk to constituents who live in Amberly, I hear a lot of people go to Pleasant Ridge, or a lot of people go to Deer Park. Deer Park has been in that Dylanvale Shopping Mall since the early 70s, in a couple of different locations. And currently, we're discussing moving within that shopping center to a much larger space. Natalie Fields is here. She's the branch manager. She can always answer questions, but her location right now, it's about 4,100 square feet. So we're looking at a much larger spot in the Dylanvale Mall that will include a variety of services, and maybe have a heavy emphasis in particular on books and material for young people. So again, just wanted to give you a brief overview. Please check out the plan and pick up a zone, handout if you'd like to. Thank you.
And thank you very much for coming this evening, and thanks so much for at least coming once a year to tell us all that's happening with the library. It's a very valuable resource. Lacey Callaway, please.
Yes, my name is Lacey Callaway. I live at 2445 Twigwood Lane. I'd like to begin by saying that the wife and I became members of the JAY when we returned from Dayton about eight years ago. Am I talking too loud? So you're adjusting. Okay. And we're at the facility about twice a week. But I'd like to say what I see there is I see infants being pushed around in multiple stroll, in the multiple stroller, people passing by, they're admiring them, they're talking to them. See young kids in the nursery, swim classes, in the gym running around, and other supervised activities for them that are both mental and physical. I see teenagers working as lifeguards, camp counselors, nursery school aides. I see teenagers in the gym shooting baskets. See softball leagues, basketball leagues, even seen fencing lessons up there for teens and adults. Among other positive attitude, or activities, and all of them have an adequate number of trained supervisors. But what I really see is a safe haven for young kids and the teens, not them sitting in front of a computer or a video game. I also see peace of mind for their parents. I see adults and seniors on the track. I see them on the exercise body movement machines, in the pool, see them in various classes that exercise their bodies and their minds, things like pool aerobics, a Wii bowling league, functional fitness classes, card games, and many other activities and events, both social and educational. At the deli, I see seniors talking and observing while getting a decent meal. I see parents socializing, and their kids also enjoying a meal that they mostly eat. These activities, and mostly the personal socialization of the elderly and of the youth, from what the experts say, are beneficial to their health and all of our well-being. Also, it's not a concern for my family, because we have two cars. But for those, especially seniors who can't or won't travel too far from home, having this in the neighborhood is truly a benefit to them, their families, and the community. For those who want to venture out, there are transportation, there's transportation provided for trips that are both educational and entertaining. Finally, I also see the current facility getting more and more crowded, and space becoming more limited, as the facility's population continues to grow because of the outstanding programs offered. It's my understanding that the JAY has always been a good neighbor at their present facility, and there is no evidence or indication that they will not continue to be a good neighbor if they're allowed to make the needed expansion to the green. Even with the development of proposed facility at the green, I understand there will be room for other environmental and aesthetic projects, along with paths and areas for walkers, with or without their dogs. I'd like to thank you for your time and allowing me to express my observations.
Thank you very much for your comments. Next is Renee Limberg, but I do not see her here this evening. So we'll move on to Bill Katz.
Thank you, Mayor and Vice Mayor and council members. My name is Bill Katz. I've been a resident for most of the last 50 years in Amberly. I'm currently on French Park Place. And I have to say to the gentleman who just spoke, I was president when we raised $40 million and built the Jewish Community Center, the Mayors and JCC, about 15 years ago, and you gave me goosebumps, sir, because it has so far exceeded any of our expectations, any of our pro formas. We are so proud of the JAY today. It is so inclusive. It is truly a community center, and it's been a tremendous advantage for the village of Amberly. If someone's moving into town and come to Amberly Village, to have a community center, a true community center, is a tremendous advantage for our community. And I can assure you that the plans for the expansion will be done with the same care and concern for the community and for the village. Those of you who participate in the JAY know that for the last 15 years, it has been kept immaculately clean, up to date, inclusive, and so I urge everyone to support the expansion, because it will be, in fact, in the best interest of our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, Debbie Brandt.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. Thank you for having me. I'm Debbie Brandt. I live at 7,600 Willow Brook Lane. I've been a resident of Amberly for about 17 years, which I'm thinking is the longest I've lived anywhere, actually. I am also here to speak favorably about the JCC's expansion plans. We are heavy users of the JCC, both the facility and the programs. I have the utmost confidence in the leadership of the JCC and the plans that they're building. I will say that Camp at the JAY is specifically very personal to me. My daughter, who is, this past summer was 18 years old, was given her first job as a camp counselor. And she wasn't just a camp counselor, she was an advocate to a child with special needs. She worked with this child for six weeks, allowed him to be a regular camper, something that he would not have been able to do at another camp. I think what the JAY does is tremendous. I know that expansion of this, the camp and its programs will only help us to serve more children like this, and to employ more children like my daughter. Thank you.
Again, thank you very much. Alan and Claire Eichner.
Good evening. My name is Alan Eichner. I live at 7,550 French Park Place. I am president of the HOA for Roman Reserve. I do not speak for the HOA, but I do speak a lot, to a lot of people in the neighborhood to get different opinions. Number one, the JAY administration and board, since inception, and we've been members since day one, have done a fantastic job executing and thinking through plans. So there's no reason to think that this project will not do as well as what the JAY has done for its members and for the community. As a homeowner, I don't see a lot of downside to this, as far as property values. We are not a blue ash with numerous opportunities for business and that type of development. So in my opinion, we need to capitalize on an opportunity like this. The esteemed treasurer over there, or Scott, maybe could address this better, but my understanding, this can bring in tax revenue through salary taxes, et cetera. So again, I don't see the downside. Yes, there have been people up here naysayers, complaining about this and that. You know what? Every project has a downside. If you don't do this, there are downsides to it. But in general, there's nothing but up here. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And finally, Hank Schneider.
Hi, thank you. My name's Hank Schneider. My wife and, my wife Anita and I live at 3472 East Galbraith. We've lived here all of our married lives, about to celebrate our 30th year here. So we've been married for 30 years. Our sons, Ben and Micah, and their families, also are residents in Amberly Village. I want to thank the members of City Council for the foresight and the encouragement to move the Jewish Community Center to where it's currently located. The JAY has proven to be, and will continue to be, a premier facility in a premier location. We all know it provides outstanding resources and program, and programming to its diverse participants. I'd like to encourage all of you, as, as council members, to proceed by making the JAY the first part of the new development at Amberly Green. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now, do any council members wish to make a comment at this point? If not, I thank everyone, and council is going to continue through the agenda. But for those who wish to leave, don't feel that you are interfering at, at all in leaving. You're welcome, welcome to not see the rest of the, the meeting. But again, thank you very much to all. We'll now move on to committee reports, and first, the Compensation and Benefits Committee.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm excited to have this be the first report, because we're talking about the first ordinance of the year. I just noticed the number, 2020-1. I'm very excited to be first up here. So the Compensation and Benefits Committee met twice. We're talking today about a first reading of an ordinance, so we're not actually passing this today, but starting our first reading of an ordinance about sort of an internal change, but an important one for this community and for all communities in, in the 21st century, but especially for us. And the committee has met twice, most recently January 15, to recommend this move forward to council. So what this is, is an update to our current administrative code, which is by ordinance, that provides currently, our current, I wrote it down, what the current code is called, something like maternity leave, and it's very old-fashioned language, provides basically, if you're a woman and you give birth the way that women give birth, and you get six weeks off unpaid, end of story, end of list. No men, no adoption, no surrogacy, no, no nothing. And really, this is, this became important to us for two reasons. One is to modernize our code, to really be able to come into the 21st century and acknowledge we, you know, our values, that this is, our code should be accurate for, for what we believe in. But also importantly, the Compensation and Benefits Committee, and I'm kind of more serious now, the Compensation and Benefits Committee is really working on making sure that we are always looking out for the benefits to our workforce in two ways. One, in terms of doing right by our employees and making sure that they have benefits that are commensurate with other communities, at, at least as good as other communities, that we're taking care of our own employees. But also, as we look ahead at succession planning, we have a, not necessarily top-heavy, but we have, we have a, we have a workforce. We've, we've made some major hires in the last couple of years, and, and are looking ahead to the future of the community, which is going to be a lot more major hires in the, in the, you know, coming decade. And always being able to attract and retain talent, not, the best talent that we can. We want to be able to be competitive in the marketplace with what other folks are offering. And obviously, in terms of parental leave, it's a big topic in the world. A lot of private sector folks are offering 12 weeks, 16 weeks paid leave. We're not, you know, public sector is not quite caught up to that yet. But it's, it's worth noting, and we mentioned this in committee, that the employers, other municipal employers who are over 50 employees, which we are not, are FMLA employers. So by law, by federal law, they offer 12 weeks unpaid leave for this, up to 12 weeks unpaid leave for this, for, in all of these circumstances already. So we're, we're starting behind the curve a little bit by, by being a smaller employer. So again, the, the actual change here, the new text of the language, provides really two main things. One is the circumstances of parentage and parentaling, is parenting, is now adoption, surrogacy, and birth, men and women. It's, and also, it's, it's six weeks unpaid during that, during that period. And it should also be noted for the council that this, this is actually not a change to the current law, but just so that there's sort of an understanding of how this works operationally, that this can come, paid time can come, like, in other words, you can take from any of your banks, your sick bank, your vacation bank, your PTO bank. So actually, effectively, if you have accrued some time, some of that time may end up being able to, to be without being paid. And we vetted this very carefully in terms of what the impact would be, and the committee was very supportive of this, and I think this catches us up to, just at the very minimum to other communities, but we're excited to, to move forward to try to offer this benefit to our, to our employees and future employees. So again, tonight is first reading. I guess what we're going to do is, if there are comments from council members, we can do that, and then otherwise, we'll just first reading.
Okay. Are there any questions or comments?
Just one comment. First, I think this is great. Thanks so much for us be reading this. Excuse me, question I have.
Ray, make sure you speak into.
Yes. Question I have is if a, a parent need, if a parent needs additional time. Question I have is if a parent needs additional time. I know, I believe in the context of disability, we modified, we changed our ordinance a couple of years ago, in which other employees can donate some of their time. You know, if that could apply here, if it were needed?
What Councilmember Warren's referring to is the modification that you made about a year and a half ago in regards to employees donating sick leave to other employees. So that is standalone within our sick leave ordinance, so it covers that same issue in terms of sick leave. So if employees did want to donate something to an employee who was running out of sick leave or had extenuating circumstances, that is an option for them. So we don't dictate what the health situation is.
Other questions or comments? If not, this will be on the agenda for the next meeting, for the second reading, if you had a minute. Okay, we'll now move on to the Law Committee.
Resolution 2020-3 authorizes the purchase of a new police cruiser, one of the current cruisers, car 907.
Rich, that's for the Police and Fire Committee.
Oh.
So I think, I think, I think the reason this was put on the agenda, you can just comment that the Law Committee met and what will be coming up, as far as the meeting this evening.
Okay, we had a meeting today regarding various revisions to the maintenance code, which are in process. I'm sure we'll be having another meeting probably the end of the month to continue working on those modifications, so that's the status of the maintenance code.
Any questions, any questions or comments? If not, we'll now move on to the Police and Fire Committee.
I don't get to do.
Can't take my, can't steal the cruiser. Well, the Police-Fire Committee met on February 4th, and we did deal with the matter of replacing a cruiser. As you are aware, the Police Department rotates its vehicle usage so that the brand-new vehicles are used out on the road by patrol officers, and as the vehicles get older and need more maintenance, they are moved into less intense uses. So one of the current cruisers, a 2007 Crown Victoria, is approaching 125,000 miles and needs to be replaced. The 2020 budget includes one replacement vehicle. Under the state purchasing program, a Ford Utility Interceptor is $34,000. After delivery, which is anticipated in the spring, it will need to be equipped as a police vehicle at an estimated cost of up to $20,000. This includes lights, sirens, radar units, graphics, and striping, as well as a video camera system that automatically records whatever, whenever the cruiser is running, and automatically uploads the video to the village server when the cruiser arrives back at the station. The estimated total of $54,000 exceeds the budgeted amount of almost $49,000, so if the actual purchase exceeds the budget, then the department will make adjustments in other areas. So accordingly, I move that we adopt Resolution 2020-3, authorizing the village manager to purchase a 2024 Utility Interceptor Cruiser, and to purchase and install new equipment into the vehicle at a cost not to exceed $54,000.
Okay. It has been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution 2020-3, authorizing the village manager to purchase the 2024 Utility Vehicle. Are there any questions or comments? If not, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution 2020-3. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Being noted that the resolution passes unanimously.
Also at our meeting, the Redding Fire Chief Todd Owens and Assistant Chief Paul Gallo attended to give us a report on the first month of our new EMS contract. In total, they made 24 runs to Amberly during January, out of a total of 182 for their department as a whole. Chief Owens explained that the majority of their staff actually lives in Redding, so when they have multiple calls going on at the same time, they do a recall of staff, and as a result, they seldom use mutual aid. They also shared response time data with us for each of the calls, and it aligned with the results that we had projected, thus, after one month, but it was aligned with what we had anticipated. It was clear that Chief Owens and Chief Wallace communicate regularly and are coordinating how the staffs work together, so all in all, it seems to be going well for the first month. And that concludes my report.
Are there any questions or comments? If not, we'll move on to the next committee report, which is the Land Development Committee, which I chair. The Land Development Committee met last week. The purpose of the meeting was to meet with representatives from the Scottish Rite or the Masons. The Masons have sold the Masonic Temple downtown to Western and Southern, and they need to be out of their property by February 2022, so they're actively looking for alternative sites. And their number-one site that they're interested in is the clubhouse at Amberly Green. They envision investing probably seven or eight million dollars in the property to bring it back to life. What they use the property for is they have mainly small meetings throughout the year. They have generally two or three larger meetings where they would use the large ballroom that fit up to 250. But they would also envision the, turning it into an event center, and they envision, basically, contracting with someone who would operate the event center. That is not a business that they're in, they're mainly into, they're small meetings, et cetera. They took us through the history of the Masons, both here and throughout the United States and Cincinnati, and a number of people who were Amberly residents were very, happened to be at the meeting, were very familiar and very complimentary of the Masons. So the committee listened to this presentation. It's something that sounded very promising, and the committee basically gave the village manager the go-ahead to continue the discussions. It is kind of early days in the discussions, but as I said, this is their preferred site, and they are, they're on this timetable of February 2022, but this is their preferred site, and they recognize that it may take a little bit longer, and they are prepared to move into another site on a temporary basis, if that is absolutely required. But as I said, the committee thought that this was a potential, real win-win for both the village and the Masons, and a real potential to bring a building back to life. And their vision of what they want to do with the property is actually quite impressive. And the nice thing is, because of the sale of their property downtown, which is a very large property, they do have the money to carry out what they would like to do. And that concludes my report. Are there any questions or comments?
My question is kind of for you and for Scott. Just, this kind of came up in the committee meeting, and it's come up in several meetings, just to be conscious of the rest of the property, and I'd just like to know if you have given this thought in our process as a whole, where are we in terms of getting to a place where we're going to discuss, you know, looking at the slope study and, you know, kind of fleshing out what our general framework is for the rest of the property?
Well, from my perspective, that's on the list. There's a couple of things that are in front of the list, so.
Let's just, I'm just clarifying context, really.
So in terms of getting to the item that council wants to discuss in regards to designating uses of the property for our purposes, we'll start with the slope study, use that as a basis for it, and identify what that area is and the acreage. And so that information will be coming forth. And then having the opportunity to talk among council, and probably in a work session or a park, a Public Buildings and Parks Committee, as to how you want to, how you want that process to unfold.
So do you anticipate that yet this year, or like a couple of months?
It would be in 2020, yes. Yes.
Thanks.
I mean, the one thing I failed to mention, specifically what they are interested in is the clubhouse, and also the poolhouse slash cart barn. And what they would, what the Masons also do is they operate a tutoring center for dyslexic students. They currently operate that both downtown and in Norwood. They envision continuing with both the Norwood site, but they would also operate this tutoring site at the, at the site. And they would specifically envision taking the pool, the poolhouse and the cart barn, and redoing that completely, to turn that into a facility for those students. So they, the area that they're mainly interested in is the clubhouse, the poolhouse, and then they would fill in the existing pool, and that would be used for parking for the tutoring Any other questions or comments?
I think they've done, utilize it, three acres.
We don't, yeah, our estimate is that's probably like three acres, but we need to, as we flesh out, understand the exact footage that they would, that they would take. And what we're looking at is, with respect to, because, you know, they would operate in an event center, and, you know, we are continuing our discussions with the Jewish Community Center and so forth, we want to minimize building too much parking, and so one of the things we're going to be looking at doing is kind of maybe using existing parking, but redoing it to increase landscaping on the parking, and so that they would use some of that in the Jewish Community Center, assuming that we move forward, with their project would also be using that, so that we minimize how much parking we create. Any other questions or comments? If not, we will move on to the Public Outreach Committee.
Thank you, Mayor. The Public Outreach Committee met on February 4th, immediately prior to the Police-Fire Committee meeting. We had a busy afternoon, and one of the things that came out of the meeting was a recommendation to approve the addendum to the contract for video production services with ESP Media. So you have in front of you Resolution 2020-4, authorizing the village manager to enter into an addendum to renew the contract with ESP Media for council meeting recording services. And ESP is here, they're all recording us. So this would enable us to, enable ESP to continue providing video recording services for council meetings. And the history of our relationship with ESP is, in October 2014, village council approved a contract with ESP Media for video services to record council meetings at a cost that was much lower than the prior arrangement with the ICRC. In fact, in the first two years of our contract with ESP, the village has reduced a cost for the service from $22,000 per year to $8,400 a year to record the meetings. So in addition to the cost savings, ESP Media hosts an archive of our council meeting videos that everyone can go and watch on their website, and they can be accessed by residents 24 hours a day, or you can just go to YouTube and search for our meetings. The original cost per council meeting was $600 per meeting in January 2015 through December 2016. Then in 2017, until the present, the cost has been $700 per meeting, and the proposed addendum continues the services for a five-year duration at $750 per council meeting. The village, we've been very satisfied with the video services. They're easy to access on YouTube. We occasionally, they will produce, assist us in producing other educational videos, which our residents may have watched, very exciting coyote, plug hug, plug hug, leaf collection, and all kinds. So anyway, what I need is a resolution authorizing the village manager to enter into an addendum to renew the contract with ESP Media for council meeting recording services.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution 2020-4, authorizing the village manager to enter into an addendum to the ESP Media contract. Are there any questions or comments? If not, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution 2020-4. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Being noted that the resolution passes unanimously.
Hey, the other thing we talked about at our meeting was our social media presence, and really, the reason we're trying to improve our social media presence, but the reason that I wanted it included on our committee agenda was to acknowledge the great work that Tammy is doing in this area. She really is trying to give us more of a presence on social media, and with everyone's help and liking Tammy's, the village's posts that are done by Tammy, and liking Amberly Village on Facebook and Twitter and wherever we are, it's a, that's how we increase our footprint in the world, on the worldwide web. And then the last thing we discussed was, we had Nancy Warren from the Human Rights Commission came to our committee meeting, and the Human Rights Commission wants to increase their presence, and we are, they are, and we are trying to work together with them to let everybody know that Amberly has a Human Rights Commission, and what they do, and who's on it, and, you know, it's, we're excited to have it, and want everybody to know about it. And that concludes my report.
Are there any questions? If not, we'll move on to the Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mayor. At our recent meeting at the Finance Committee, a couple, other than discussing the financial reports, which the village manager presented earlier, there is some pending legislation regarding the city of Cincinnati, which has an earnings tax of 2.1%. At the November 2019 election, the residents of the city of Cincinnati voted to eliminate the 3/10ths of a percent Surtax, which could be a windfall, a small windfall to the village of Amberly, in that we provide a credit for taxes paid to other communities. So we would potentially pick up another 2/10ths of 1% of earnings tax revenue should another measure get passed. On the March ballot, there is a pending sales tax issue, which would increase sales tax for residents of Hamilton County by 8/10ths of 1%. Should this pass, then the residents, the workers in the city of Cincinnati will receive a decrease in their earnings tax by the 3/10ths of 1%, bringing the earnings tax in to city Cincinnati to 1.8%. The revenues generated by the sales tax would be going to supplement the needs for Sorda or the Queen City Metro, which operates the transit system here in Hamilton County, for the bulk of the monies, and the rest of the residual amount would go to infrastructure needs to improve the roads on which the mass transit system operates. So that is a potential. We will see what happens come with the March election. The second item, which was discussed at the Finance Committee, and we have this in your packet, as is required by the Ohio law, the annual combined statement of receipts, dispersals, and changes in fund balances for the year ending December 31st, 2019, is included in your packet. This report is available to all residents through the Amberly website, as well as the That concludes my report.
Are there any questions or comments? If not, we will move on to the Managers' Report.
The first item is a housekeeping item related to Ordinance 2020-2. This is adopting and enacting a supplement to the Code of Ordinances of Amberly Village. So this is a capture of legislation that you have adopted this past year, and it also captures Ohio revised code changes that have occurred up through July of 2019. and it also captures Ohio Revised Code changes that have occurred up through July of 2019. Even though you have already taken the action to approve certain legislation here, and the state has already approved their legislation, it's necessary for us to what we refer to as codify it, which puts it into the codification of the village, and it's required that you take action to approve it. So it's a bit of redundant process, and it is an ordinance, so it does require a motion to approve and a waiving of the three readings. It will go into effect in forty-five days, but it's actually already in effect because those exist currently. So at this time, it would be appropriate for a motion to approve Ordinance 2020-2 and also waive the three readings.
I'll begin by moving that we waive three readings on Ordinance 2020-2, adopting and enacting a supplement to the Code of Ordinances of Amberly Village.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we waive the three readings with respect to Ordinance 2020-2, which is an ordinance adopting and enacting a supplement to the Code of Ordinances of Amberly Village. Are there any questions or comments? If not, it has been moved and seconded that we waive the three readings with respect to Ordinance 2020-2. Please call the roll.
Richard Bardak. Peg Conway.
Yes.
Ed Hattenbach.
Yes.
Alita Kaymine.
Yes.
Tom Muthing.
Yes.
Ray Warren.
Yes.
Natalie Wolf.
Yes.
Okay, now I'd like to move that we adopt Ordinance 2020-2, adopting and enacting a supplement to the Code of Ordinances of Amberly Village.
Second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt Ordinance 2020-2, adopting and enacting a supplement to the Code of Ordinances. Are there any questions or comments? If not, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt Ordinance 2020-2. Please call the roll.
Richard Bardak. Peg Conway.
Yes.
Ed Hattenbach.
Yes.
Alita Kaymine.
Yes.
Tom Muthing.
Yes.
Ray Warren.
Yes.
Natalie Wolf.
Yes.
All right, thank you. The next item, I want to highlight a couple items from the village manager's report. One is another year-end number that I'd like to share with you, and that's in regards to the aggregation program that the village established several years ago. We are still seeing the benefits of that, and from the, for the electric aggregation, our residents combined saved over seventy-seven thousand dollars just in the calendar year 2019. So that's some pretty impressive savings just by being part of our electric aggregation program. Our gas program was not quite as successful. We actually went, we were twenty-five thousand, not to the good. But overall, we are now back on target with having a lower rate than Duke Energy. And that's the whole intent with aggregation, is to be lower than, than Duke Energy. So we were successful with that on the electric side. Ten months of 2019, we were not, but the last two months of 2019, we have been lower than Duke Energy, and we anticipate that trend to continue in 2024 for gas, as well as electric. And then on a much smaller scale, the village does a similar program with our public facilities. So this particular building, as well as the village garage, we are enrolled in an aggregation program specifically for municipal purposes, and the village saved over twenty-eight hundred dollars just by being enrolled in that particular program. So good way to save, save money on electric. I wanted to mention that Patty Myers, who has been our income tax administrator since she began in 2012, has announced her retirement. So Patty will be retiring at the end of the tax season, so anticipate at the end of April Patty will retire. But she has done an excellent job for the, for the village. She has also assimilated the JED's earnings tax collection, which is another large job, so she's doing a couple of jobs. But she is ready to, ready to retire, but she'll take us through this current tax season, which I'm grateful for, and a replacement will be named soon. So Patty will have an opportunity to train the new hire before she, before she leaves. And the last item to mention is that we did receive three applications for the Human Rights Commission vacancy that we currently have, and this is a, an appointment of council. So we've set up a special council meeting for this particular purpose. It'll be held on February 24th at 5:00 p.m., and we anticipate being able to interview all three of the candidates at that particular time and hour. So February 24th at 5:00 p.m., and that concludes my report.
Are there any questions for the manager? If not, we'll move on to, you don't hear me. Move on to the mayor's report and the first item. As in both the December meeting and the January meeting, council continued its annual process of reviewing the manager's performance. I think, I know I speak for myself, it is a very worthwhile process because it not only allows council the chance to have conversation with the manager, but it's a good chance for the council to talk how we can work better together as a team. And we concluded that process in January, and the manager received his appraisal, and I think the manager, the manager was satisfied with his appraisal. And we, as also part of the process, we go through an annual review of the manager's compensation. And before you tonight is an ordinance, Ordinance 2020-3. I would first like to waive the three readings with respect to Ordinance 2020-3. Waiving the three readings, we have completed the process, and now all we have to do is incorporate the pay increases into his contract. So I think it's appropriate that we waive the, the three readings.
Second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we waive the three readings with respect to Ordinance 2020-3, which, which is the addendum to the village manager's contract, which incorporates the pay, pay adjustments that we have proposed. Are there any questions or comments? If not, it has been moved and seconded that we waive the three, three readings with respect to Ordinance 2020-3. Please call the roll.
Richard Bardak. Peg Conway.
Yes.
Ed Hattenbach.
Yes.
Alita Kaymine.
Yes.
Tom Muthing.
Yes.
Ray Warren.
Yes.
Natalie Wolf.
Yes.
And I would now like to make a motion that we adopt Ordinance 2020-3, which, which increases the manager's salary by two percent and also grants the manager a one-time bonus of three thousand dollars. This is a practice that the council started last year. It's just a way of recognizing the extraordinary performance and especially the extraordinary efforts that the manager has been putting in to address some of the issues that we've needed to, like, you know, just dealing with these one-time things like down at 2100 section and so forth. You know, we're really making great progress, and we wanted to recognize that. So I move that we adopt Ordinance 2020-3.
Second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt Ordinance 2020-3. Are there any questions or comments? If not, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt Ordinance 2020-3. Please, please call the roll.
Richard Bardak. Peg Conway.
Yes.
Ed Hattenbach.
Yes.
Alita Kaymine.
Yes.
Tom Muthing.
Yes.
Ray Warren.
Yes.
Natalie Wolf.
Yes.
And finally, I would like to adopt, to move that we adopt this ordinance as an emergency measure, which is necessary for the immediate preservation of public peace, health, safety, and it shall go into effect forthwith. I mean, what it mainly does is allows us to basically, you know, count, we as council, we're a little bit late in starting the appraisal process. We should have completed it in December and gotten this done. So this is, this is our fault, but we would like to pass it as an emergency measure.
Second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt Ordinance 2020-3 as an emergency measure. Are there any questions or comments? If not, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt Ordinance 2020-3 as an emergency measure. Please call the roll.
Richard Bardak. Peg Conway.
Yes.
Ed Hattenbach.
Yes.
Alita Kaymine.
Yes.
Tom Muthing.
Yes.
Ray Warren.
Yes.
Natalie Wolf.
Yes.
And then just two other items. Council will have noted in the manager's monthly report that he and I met with the representative from the Jewish Community Center, and we, when we held these meetings, we committed that we would update council. The purpose of this meeting was just to really go over the timetable, and specifically, you know, the timetable with respect to our, all the zoning work that we've been working on, to make sure that they understand what the timetable is. And we also were reviewing kind of the action items. We have not, we, you know, we have mentioned to the Jewish Community Center that we need to start to have a detailed understanding of things like the potential tax revenues to us, et cetera, but we did not get into that. But that will be coming up in a, in a future meeting. And then the other thing I wanted to mention was the, for those that, that come to our meetings, the March meeting is a reminder that our March meeting, which is our normal schedule for council meetings in Amberly Village is, is the second Monday of a month, but because of a conflict with Jewish holidays, that meeting will be the Wednesday following that Monday, and I believe that's the 11th. So it'd be March 11th as opposed to March 9th. And that concludes my mayor's report. Are there any questions or comments? If not, any new business?
I just want a quick reminder, if I'm not stepping on anybody's toes, but I just saw the email that the We Thrive group, that's the, it was chronic disease, but Health and Wellness Group is, meets now on the second Wednesdays of the month from 6:00 to 7:00 at the J. I'm sure they'd love to have more people help out, and I do see that they're planning a Health and Wellness Fair, I think, with the J on March 15th. So good stuff coming up. If you're still interested in getting involved with something in the village and health and wellness and all the things that they have going on, keep a lookout for them. That's a good group, and Carol Donilon is doing a great job with them. And so their next meeting is this Wednesday, February 12th, 6:00 to 7:00 at the J.
And the only other, I do want to mention the upcoming One Stop Drop, which is a program that is supported by the Environmental Safety Committee. It's a recycling event where we have safe paper shredding, recycling of electronics, as well as Goodwill truck there. That will be April 5th this year, which is Sunday, April 5th, from, you know, can be noon till 4:00 down at Amberly Green. So it's the same participants that have been in, at that event the last few years. So that, again, will be a good event. I think it's an event that people look forward to. They save up their paper and save up their other things for recycling.
Is Scrap It Up going to be there again?
Scrap It Up is not there. Scrap It Up was not there last year either. They, they will take donations at their site up in Pleasant Ridge, but they will not be. Okay, thank you all for attending, and that concludes the meeting. The meeting is adjourned.